The Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, August the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and welcome everyone here this evening. We do not have our city administrator here with us this evening, but Tina Peterson is sitting in for, in, in his place this evening and keeping us straight. So we'll, we'll start out this evening by having a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Anderson, afterwards Eric, Councilman Jensen will give us the opening remarks.
All right, please rise, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Diana. And Eric? Now need approval of tonight's meeting agenda. I don't think we have any changes. Is that correct?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on to our open session and invite anybody to come forward now and address the council at this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back up here to the front and move right on to our consent items this evening, which consists of our city council meetings of July the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, and consider for approval change order number eight for Acme Construction Incorporated for the Stream Drain Outfall Project and payment approval report for August second, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve that tonight consent items is read by you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We do not have board commissioner committee appointments or presentations, and we have none, no scheduled public hearings this evening. We'll move right into our action items ready for vote this, this evening, and we'll start out with ten A. Consider, consider a resolution, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three zero, amending the personal policies and procedures previously approved by city councils, specifically amending section X ones V benefits adding subject eight four oh one K contributors and establish an employee match for employee four oh one K retirement plans. And we'll turn time over to our general counsel.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Before you is a resolution that was continued from our previous city council meeting with regard to adding a section to our personnel policy and procedures manual. This council previously approved in the budget document an added benefit to our employees of a up to two percent match for any contributions that they make to a four oh one K plan, either through the U R S, through John Hancock, or through Mission Square. There were some questions last time regarding whether or not we could account for a vesting period after the employees begins contributing. You've been the recipients of some emails explaining that the research that we did with U R S resulted in a negative answer on that. They're, they have told us that there's no way that that can happen in the U R S system. So what is being proposed is that the matching contributions will not be available, the employee will not be available for that benefit until they've been off probation. So for a regular employee, that would be a period of six months, and for a public safety employee, it's one year from the time that they begin serving in their capacity.
So Tina, just a quick question on that. So is that, so if a new employee, the new employee isn't eligible for six months, so nothing is being contributed or...
Correct.
Deposited, whatever.
Right.
And then, then ultimately, they can't withdraw that until after they leave? Or roll it into a separate IRA plan with an outside provider? Mike, does that, does that sound right?
You mean, so once it's in the four oh one K plan...
Mm-hmm. They can, they can transfer it to an IRA after they leave.
Yes.
Okay.
They, they would be able to roll over whatever the plan allows them to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That would, that's something that would be governed by the plan documents.
Right. That's right.
Okay. Any other questions?
So this is kind of an administrative question about the plan, and so you may not know, but do our employees automatically enrolled in the four oh one K withholding and match? Or do they have to opt in?
They have to opt in. We have a form we developed for them to let us know that they want to apply for the match, and then they also have to designate with payroll what their contribution is.
Another questions, counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty, amending the personal policies and procedures previously approved by the city council, specifically amending section fourteen benefits adding subsection eight four oh one contribution match to establish an employer match for an employee four oh one K retirement plans.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. And this will be a roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well now I'll move to ten B to consider for adoption resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three two of the Pleasant Grove City Council, Pleasant Grove City, Utah County, Utah declaring its intention to reimburse itself from proceeds from one of the more tax exempt financings for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain capital improvements such as police vehicles, technology, and recreation equipment, and providing for an effective date. We'll turn the time over to Director Roy.
So this is just an action needed. C is actually going to accept the master lease agreement, but we want to do the reimbursement resolution in case it takes us longer than a week to get closed as the vehicles come in, those type of things that we can reimburse ourselves out of these proceeds. So that has a sixty day look back period. So say if a vehicle came in this week, then we can get it before we close, before we can get the documents closed with U S Bank. And then I'll talk about some of the terms with U S Bank in the next resolution, but this is just giving us permission to reimburse ourselves with the lease proceeds if we need to.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Roy?
Yeah, so I just want to understand, so there's four hundred and four thousand dollars is kind of a cap that is, is in here. It's not entirely clear. There's a list of things that are kind of within a category. Do we have a more specific list that relates to the four hundred and four thousand dollars? Because it wasn't included in the packet, and I would...
I thought it was, I don't know if I did the whole master lease. Um, I can tell you what it is. So there's going to be eight vehicles. Five of those are Ford F-150s, and then three Tahos. That's going to be the equipment. And, and then we do sixty thousand dollars worth of computer equipment, and I don't have a list on that, but I think there's thirty plus, and then we usually get some servers on our, and that's on a four-year rotation. And then we have, we usually get three to four new cardio equipment at the rec center for the other sixty. So the biggest chunk is sixty for computers, sixty for equipment, and then the rest is vehicles.
Could we get a breakdown on that, and so the council could see that on...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Work for you guys?
Yeah. I thought there was a copy in the master lease, but I have the computer list that I can send you guys, and then I can get the list of the equipment that the rec's planning on getting.
Basically, it's all been budgeted anyway, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we budgeted to do the transfer, to pay the debt service, so this is just giving us authorization to go out and get into the lease with U S Bank, so, for that stuff.
Yeah, I mean fundamentally, I don't have a problem with what we're doing, and I understand that. I think as, as a member of the public, it would be very difficult to understand what we're spending the four hundred and four thousand dollars on. The master lease has a schedule of payments, I think. I'm trying to see if one of the exhibits has a list of the capital property that we're actually acquiring and how we're spending that money.
Yeah, they may, yeah. It doesn't. Are you looking in the master lease? I have one just because I have, yeah, so, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, just as a matter of process for, for myself, I would prefer there to be more specificity as opposed to less. So when we have a large amount of money, I would, I just want our residents to be able to see, one, as an accountability factor of what we're spending our money on, but also, two, that they can see the investment that we're putting into our police force because we believe in them. We think they do great work, and we want them to have everything that they need. But I think it's important that the details are shared.
Okay.
Any other questions for Denise? Not in look like this. Thank you. And we'll ask for a motion on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three two.
So Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three two as read.
We have a motion from...
Second.
Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Jensen. And we'll start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to ten C. Consider resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease purchase agreement with U S Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance Incorporated for the purpose of acquiring public safety vehicles, computers, fitness equipment, and authorizing execution and delivery thereof, and providing for effective date. Back to Director Roy.
So the only, so I actually do put a bid out. I think I put it out to four places. We only got two bids, one from Zion's and one from U S Bank. And U S Bank was the lowest with interest rate of three point nine nine five percent. And it's for a three-year term for the four hundred and four, two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, so.
How much, how much lower was that than?
Seven thousand dollars. I don't remember the percentage.
Yeah, that's fine. Overall, a seven thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, seven thousand dollars. So that's why I do put it out there.
Yeah, good.
It's seven thousand's a lot, so, yep.
Good job.
Any other questions for Director?
Nope.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease purchase agreement with U S Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance for the purpose of acquiring public safety vehicles, computers, fitness equipment, and authorizing the execution and delivery thereof, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Anderson. And we will start the other way this time, and we'll start out with Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to ten D. Consider for, consider a resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two five, authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement with Blossom Hill LLC for roadway infrastructure improvements in the area of two hundred South, eleven fifty East, Pleasant Grove, Utah, and providing for an effective date. And we'll turn the time over to our Public Works Director, Winterton.
Mayor and counsel, thank you. The agreement before you is an agreement to perform some roadwork on areas that are city property, but is adjacent to a future development, and the development's coming in. And if you look at the map, we got the high school right here. We got two hundred South right here. We call this area Blossom Hills, a former orchard. I've intentionally set the date to two thousand and twenty-one because that's what it used to look like. As we move forward in time, we can see that the, the area got cleared right there of the orchard. Again, we're, we're right here just below this purple rectangle. And if you look at two thousand and twenty-four, they build a little subdivision there. Phase one didn't extend past that part of the street and right here. Phase two is going to develop the rest of that, connect the road up, and...
That's pretty, that's pretty steep right there, isn't it?
We, they filled it in. We spent a lot of time with that sag vertical curve, making sure that...
It was a little rough.
Things come in, the, the water line's going to connect in there. But you can see that this property right here, and even north of that, that doesn't have sidewalk in front of this Smith property right here, Mr. Smith, is outside of this development. And so as part of our responsibilities as a city is they'll build right up to their line, and then we'll take it from there. Well, makes sense to have their contractor do it. So we've hashed out all the details several times and gone through both attorneys several times. And here we are today to say, okay, we'll pay to have our portion done, which actually comes up in here and takes care of some landscaping here because that's, again, our responsibility. It's not their responsibility since it's outside of their project limits.
Do we, do we, what, what do we, I don't know what we do on these circumstances. Do we narrow the road? Do we keep the road as a, as a bubble there?
Uh, no, we, we will end up, in, in terms of narrowing the road, yeah, that cul-de-sac will be gone. We're going to straight, straight, straight through there.
But is there a, a widening?
No.
So you'll, you'll straighten that out?
It'll straighten out, and we'll put in some landscaping, extend that driveway. And, and it's similar to maybe what a road project would be for Pleasant Grove on a super micro level. And we're just going to have their contractor do it because it makes sense while they're there to do that.
And it wasn't a full cul-de-sac to begin with. It was just kind of a more...
No.
Kind of a turnaround there, right?
Kind of a turnaround.
A small circle, though. It was a, it's a, it's a circle.
Just enough to make a snowplow driver very frustrated.
Yeah, make a garbage truck drive on Mr. Smith's driveway and crack it all up. So he, he's actually going to pay a little extra and, and get a driveway all the way to his garage. And so we've worked out a lot of details associated with this, and we feel like this is a fair compromise between the, the developer and the city's dollars to create connectivity for vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians.
So the cost, it looks like it's ninety-three thousand is what we anticipate it to be for us?
Yep. Things ain't cheap, are they?
This, this, this has a little history here because Blossom Hills, when they began, they, they really petitioned us to not have that road go through. So they didn't have to fill in that void there, and it was a known. So, and we knew that we'd probably have to straighten out the street there, and that'd be on us. But it's going to work a lot better having that road connect to that, give them another access over in that area there that was, that was on our plan.
And so, you know, and also, we're, we're going to redo some asphalt in here. It hasn't seen any rehab. And so we're, we're going to put in the sidewalk. We're going to fix the landscaping. We're going to, you can see that asphalt's in pretty rough shape, so sidewalks are expensive.
It was just a, it was just a kind of really put in there as a temporary...
Yeah.
Turnaround, knowing that that road was going to go through someday.
There was also a very large issue about the deer that were going to be displaced.
At the time, there...
Do you remember?
There was. Yeah, yeah.
I know where they've all gone, though.
That'd be your place, Diana.
Yep.
So on this map, now that you're kind of zoomed in, we have kind of this bubble here. So do we have a public right of way then that goes deeper into these people's property, or?
And are we releasing that?
Yeah, so like, does our right of way come back in here, or is it stay here?
The property is, is straight through. It, it... Back, back when they did these plats, this is older than maybe thirty years. They still put those, that pavement, and then they just said, well, the property's there, and we're just driving on your property. They didn't, they didn't necessarily create that cul-de-sac.
So, but we are, it sounds like it's part of the project. We're incurring a cost to bring this straight, and then we're going to rehab their yards here on the sides.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
It'll look really great when we get that done.
Yep.
Any, any other questions for the director? Okay, thank you. If not, thank you, Neil. Last for a motion on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two five.
I make the motion that we approve resolution dash two, sorry, that we approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two five, authorizing the mayor to execute reimbursement agreement with Blossom Hill LLC for roadway infrastructure improvements in the area of two hundred South and eleven fifty East, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lamone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by... Councilmember Jensen. And we'll start out with Councilmember Anderson on a roll call vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Now move to ten E, which is to invite, to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a Lunar Gala's local consent request to apply for a single event liquor license as required by the state liquor license for the winter court and Unseely Fae Ball, I guess I'm saying that right, on December the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from six P M. to ten thirty P M., located at eight, eight six West, twenty-six hundred North Pleasant Grove. And the presenter is our general counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a, a application from a local business, Lunar Galas. They are a event sponsor company located in Pleasant Grove, and they are going to have an event in December out at the Stonegate Event Center. And they want to serve alcohol at that event. They have checked the boxes for beer, wine, and liquor. The state requires them to get local consent, meaning that the mayor and council do not object to the alcohol being served at this event. The applicants are here. I told them that they might want to take a few minutes and describe the event to you. But basically, it's going to be at the Stonegate Center. There isn't anticipated any traffic problems or any extra public safety being assigned there. And so it's pretty, it's a pretty simple, straightforward special event. It's mostly just for the permission to serve alcohol.
Just for this one event, and just for this one?
Just for this one event on December thirteenth.
Any other questions for, before we have them come up with Tina, counsel? Would you guys come up and... I have to make one comment here before you start. This is, okay, the, we're in August here, and we've never had someone come...
I was going to say the same thing.
Come to us this and prepare in case there's, usually it's the week before or the day of.
It's a, it's a emergency reconvene.
We're, we're called the night before saying, hey, we've got a meeting at noon. Can you be there?
I was going to say the same thing. This has never happened.
We are just really excited.
You are very organized.
Yes. So it's, because it's a winter ball, there's a lot of planning involved, so we're just trying to get all our ducks in a row.
Well done.
Because it's a beautiful, big community building event, so.
Tell us, tell us about, I'm not, I'm not familiar with it. Tell us about the event and what you've got.
Okay, so we are doing a fantasy ball. I don't know if you've heard of any of the romance books. We're not going in that direction. We're focusing more on Gaelic and Celtic lore, and they're fae. They have, I don't know how, how history deep do you want to go?
Our Unseely Fae is what? Is that a character?
Fae is...
Or like a place?
They're different classifications. So they have like the Seely Fae, which is the summer court, and they're more of the traditionally friendly fae. And then we're doing the Unseely Fae, which is the winter court, hence the winter court ball. And they are more of the mischievous, malicious type fae.
Okay, I love this.
And in our event company, we do a lot of workshops based in lore, and a lot of them are around like learning more about yourself and learning about history and lore. And so this one is just a bigger event, a ball, and it's for everyone eighteen and up. And obviously, yeah, we're, we're just trying to do everything the right way.
Now, do you have your business here in Pleasant Grove, and what made you choose Stonegate?
Um, we were touring a bunch of other venues, but the one of their ball rooms is just, it's...
It's gorgeous.
It's met, meets your needs. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and your business is, is online, or do you have a store?
Uh, it's online.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a website, Instagram, everything, so.
What's your website?
Lunargallas.com.
That's awesome. Is this the first time you've done it?
Uh, this is our first big event.
Uh-huh.
So.
That's awesome.
We've done, we usually do smaller intimate events, mostly for women, usually twelve to fifteen people.
Oh, okay.
So this one's...
Quite larger.
We're stretching.
Yeah, we're growing. Yes.
That's always a good thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Well, I commend your organization.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
That's awesome.
Well, maybe we can send Diana as a representative. She can go.
Come on, it's going to be really fun.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful.
I'm a fae. I just got back from Ireland.
Oh, that's amazing.
Any other questions for these two? Well, thank you very much, and thank you for, again, for...
Being on it.
Being on it, okay.
Well...
And I'm going through your application, every, your, your insurance cert, and it's just overwhelming. It, you guys, I wish we could, we'll use you as an example next time somebody comes in the week before says, no.
I always get my homework done.
Okay.
Clearly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, I ask for a motion.
I'd like to, let's see, how do we do this? That we approve and sign...
Special event permit.
The Lunar Gala's local consent request to apply for a single event liquor license.
Perfect.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that concludes all of our business items this evening, our voting, and we'll now move back to our directors' reports. And we'll, we've been waiting for our Public Works Director to get all his notes put together here for his presentation this evening. And I do call it a presentation. So anyways, so would you come forward and... Lot of things going on, Neil.
I hope I'm not underwhelming.
Lot of good stuff.
I've just got one little thing to show you, and that's all I have to show you.
And I, I will make the comment. I don't know who has the time and who comes up this, but Councilmember Rogers going around the barricades and then how that all, I thought that was so good. And, and...
That was setting confidence.
And I'll tell you, I never thought in my life I would see four hundred and oh look that good, and it's not even done yet. Okay, so, anything, so what a great job.
Are you going all the way up to first, by the way?
Looks great. We are not.
How far, how far east are you going?
As far as we've gone with this phase.
Okay, got it.
We got to do some more water lines up there.
This is the kind of stuff that, that, that comes at us. The Utah Division of Drinking Water has proposed new fees for cities and, and systems. And the, I'll, I'll just give you my quick summary of it is, they thought, you know what, we work with all these cities, and we have staff that has to do that, so let's charge them to work with us. So that's really what, what they're proposing fees for. I don't know what this is going to mean to us yet because this is the first time I've, I've seen these exact fees, but three point three cents per thousand gallons of water used. three point three cents per thousand gallons of water used. I don't know if that's culinary or secondary. But as a city, we use twenty million gallons a day of water during the summer, so.
What are they gonna use that for?
On the secondary. So, if this is culinary?
Between the two, we're, we're at twenty plus million gallons in a single day. So, um.
That's the good news.
No, I'm just kidding, that's, that's not good news.
So, maybe you could tell us like what our residents can do. I see there's some public outreach sessions there.
Yeah.
What can our residents do? Because I mean, ultimately, if they impose this fee, then we're gonna have to absorb it as a city and like we pass it on. And so, like our residents need to get involved probably early and often now, so what, what can we do to inform them of what they can do to kind of get out in front of this and put some pressure on this?
You mean specifically with D D W?
Yeah, with this, with this, with this proposal.
I, I think we could publish these in our own publications and say, let your voice be heard. Um, I, Scott's not here, I was gonna ask him about the league. I mean, I literally, the timestamp on this is five fifty-one. So, um, we're just seeing this now.
We should contact the league. This is the first I've heard of it. They have not been discussing this in any of my L P C meetings.
Are they even a government entity that can impose these kinda regulatory, it's almost like a regulatory fine?
It's a division, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the Division of Drinking Water is, is part of.
And what are they gonna use the money?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think we engage the league, but I also think we get everybody we can to express their ire.
Their displeasure.
Yeah, what's the money going towards?
Uh, again, I, I, I believe what it is, is they're going, hey, we have a little budget shortfall, so let's just ding the communities out there instead of them going to the state legislature and saying, can you allocate more money for us? That's a revenue source for them to generate money for their own operational needs, if you will. They're the organization that oversees all the public water systems and the sanitary survey. Uh, we submit all of our reports to them and, and they oversee the drinking water of the entire state. So, to, to me, I would probably, if I was in their shoes, go to my legislature and say, hey, I need more money 'cause I need a couple more guys or something. And then they would say, okay. And, but this has been, I think, the solution that they came up with is to ding the water suppliers for that, so.
Neil, will you forward that to Scott and I?
I will. I will.
Would this be something we could also send to our senator and House representative to say?
Yeah.
What can you do for us? No, well, okay, I'm just saying that I think this may have come from the legislature and says, you know, go back, go stick the cities with this.
Maybe.
Exactly what happened.
They got all kinds of money, go stick the cities. Okay, I'm just telling the way it is, okay? And I hope our representatives are listening tonight. Thanks for sticking it to us, okay?
That's a segue into-
You don't even, you don't need to apologize, mayor.
I lost my filter there a little bit, okay?
You're, you're spot on.
Just a, a small update, we are performing a, a rate study citywide on our utility rates. Every so often, you should perform a rate study to ensure that the utility, um, has the, the, the documentation of its operations and its revenues. And obviously, uh, at a very high level, a utility needs to have operational money and capital money. And it has to have a matching revenue source for that. And so, Denise and I are spending time now gathering lots of data and, and offering that to Bowen Collins and Associates who are working, I believe, in conjunction with Louis Young. I don't know that they've got their financial group on board yet as a subcontractor to them, but ultimately, come December or January, these, these things take six, eight, nine months, sometimes a year to complete, but our target date is December, January, prior to our, uh, meetings that we'll, we'll have to start preparing next year's budget to, to bring forth that information to you. And so, it, it's things like that that roll into our discussion and that we have to account for. And, and you know, it's stuff like that that we, is nearly a pass-through to give money to the state. And our past increases have gone to Tempano Gis special service district, hefty increases. And we, we as a city have not had any increase on our sewer. Li- literally, no increase to account for our own inflation and our own increasing costs. And so, um, we'll, we'll have those deep conversations that I hope to spend many hours. One of those conversations will be related to secondary water and how we're going to, uh, address the budget need and the revenue associated with that. Now, that's easy to come up with the big number for the budget and the big number for the revenue. What isn't quite as easy is how to distribute that across user classes. And so, my intention and my hope is to present you a few different options and then, and then have a discussion about that. And then go down a path that resembles one or two of those and, and get more details associated with that. Because there's a lot of balance associated with a base rate and a user rate. And, uh, when you, when you have infrastructure costs that are fixed, you can't rely on a user rate to cover those. Uh, but then you also have users that are in different classes. So, a single-family homeowner, eh, for one lot size pays a certain amount today. You would hope that with a volume charge component, that could equalize, uh, the difference in use between a smaller lot and a larger lot. And similar to that situation is we have, uh, in our community today, a, a multifamily home. Now, most of our multifamily homes don't have access to secondary water. They are on the west side of State Street where we have elected to not have secondary water, but we do have a few that have that. And they are being charged the same as a, a single-family home because we don't have a mechanism in our fees and charges today to account for that. If you have a utility bill, then you pay for the utilities that are associated with that. And this study will take that into consideration.
That's good, I like that.
Will you have enough data, um, at that, whenever you're turning this into the study? Will you have an, have, will you have collected enough data?
Yes.
One season of usage?
We don't need to collect an entire season for the whole city. We just need, um, grab sample data for averages. And, and you know, whether you take, you know, a hundred or a thousand, I think that's plenty of data to, to create that, um, study to know what, uh, we are using and then what we ought to be using. And those generally are two different numbers for outside irrigation when you go from metered to unmetered.
And this was a generally normal summer weather wise?
This has been a hot, dry summer, so we have used a lot of water. We're on the tails of two very good years where the messaging statewide hasn't been as aggressive to use less water. And that habit has carried into this year. Uh, and so, we are using a lot of water. Now, what is interesting, I kinda briefly touched on it, is when we started messaging with our own individual, part-time, few hours a week guy, um, it actually showed up in our data that, that we were using a little bit less. So, I think that message is out there and I think as we move forward with, uh, a, a base rate and a user rate, volume rate, then, uh, people will get the message and they will have that data in their hands. Now, one thing that we had hoped to have that is really coming down to somewhat of a staffing challenge is giving people the data early and having it. So, they are using the app. Uh, there's a, a, a process of getting all the data associated with the device that's in people's yard and having that link up seamlessly with our, uh, billing software. Uh, and having what we might call somewhat of a single service sign-on, but, but you, you as a user need to be able to go in and, and, and have the numbers and information readily available to you so that you can sign up for the app. And we don't quite have that ready yet. And that's just the sheer number of accounts we have and entering that data manually into the, the system is, is time-consuming. But we're gonna get there and, um, I don't think that implementing the charge will be the challenge because we won't recommend we do that until we're ready.
Yeah.
It just, we just won't. We can, we can talk about it and establish it, but until we are ready as a city and, and have all the data and have the data available to residents to use, uh, I would not, and, and will not bring that as a recommendation to implement until that's ready. We'll continue on the same fee schedule, if you will, until we're comfortable with that. So.
Can I ask you a question about the, the rate study? So, the rate study just analyzes our systems and our needs, right? It's not a comparison of any cities around us, what they're charging, what an average rate looks like.
We have access to that data, but what we don't have access to data is why their rates are the way they are. Meaning, we don't, we don't dive into their capital facility plan, we don't dive into their replacement plan, their operations, their, uh, inter-fund transfers. We, we will have a comparison between a city to city. That data, I wouldn't say it's easy, but it's relatively available for us to create that comparison.
And then, kind of following along those lines, so I just wanna know what we're gonna be looking at when it comes out and we'll talk, I'm sure, when it gets closer. But can we expect to see it broken down between what is going, needs to be collected in order to prepare for capital projects as opposed to ongoing maintenance? Or is it gonna be one lump sum number?
No, I, I, the, the way these are developed to dive into the details is you create a, a capital plan that, uh, we're, we're looking at ten years. That's what we're looking at is a capital plan for ten years. Then you look at historic operational, uh, costs and then you anticipate operational costs. And you put those into the, um, equation and then it'll say you need this much revenue. And so, part of that discussion is, uh, is saying here, explaining what projects need to be done so that we can thoroughly explain the projects that need to happen with that money. And then, and then to, to take it even a step further and more granular, we will have a discussion, well, should we bond for generational projects? Or should we saddle existing and current residents with a fifty-year asset? Those are philosophical questions that we will need to have 'cause a pay-as-you-go is expensive. It just is. Pay-as-you-go, you, you save up for a ten million dollar project and that, that saddles existing and current right off the bat pretty heavily. And so, I mean-
Not only that, it's by the time you save up the ten million dollars, it's fifteen million.
Yes. Uh, that, that's, we, we, we try to be fiscally conservative and I still would say, this is my opinion, that using debt and bonding appropriately is responsible spending, very much so. Because, you know, if, if I live here and I pay for a fifty-year asset in three years and then I move, I, I, why, why did I just get, get saddled with three years of rates when, when this asset is gonna last the community, like a tank or a well, for example? Those are, those are in our capital plan. We have tanks that need to be replaced.
So, that was actually, leads to a question I had as well, which is, is there a place where we and the residents of Pleasant Grove can see our ten-year capital plan?
Absolutely.
And so, maybe, how do we direct them to that so they can see kind of?
We're developing that now.
It's coming out, okay. In conjunction with the rate plan that you're providing that information, okay? So, that'll be available on the Public Works website when it becomes finalized?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we will, we will have a capital plan for all of the things that we're looking at. Water, secondary water, sewer, storm drain, roads. All of those, uh, utility fees that we have on our bill are going to be, uh, fine-toothed looked at. Uh, and that's also gonna, I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but it's gonna, we're gonna have that transparent document for everyone to look at, scrutinize. And, and if someone comes and says, well, you don't need to rebuild a tank and, you know, I'll, I'm, I'll be glad to have that conversation with them related to, to, to water line replacement. We, we have run our water department and water division ragged these last two weeks because of, uh, an anomaly in water line leaks. They were out last night till three A M. We had four water line leaks last night, uh, last week alone after hours that, that piled up. Now, there was a lull where we didn't have them for six weeks. I can't explain it. But, um, water line replacement is important. And, and how and when and how often and the frequency of that all comes down to the available funds we have to execute on that. So, um, I, I would like to compliment, uh, the, the amount of infrastructure investment that the council has performed. Currently, the, uh, the amount of infrastructure we have been able to replace and invest in is, is at our peak capacity of staff's ability to even manage this. And I'm not talking just me or public works staff. Denise is, is at her level, I would say, of being able to manage. Tina, we, we get into ourselves trouble all the time and, and I say that somewhat facetiously. But, but we have disputes, we have monies, we have grants, we have payments, all of these things. We have inspections that are required to, to be executed for the work that's happened in Pleasant Grove. Quite frankly, is, is, I'll put our numbers up against any place for efficiency because we have spent a lot of money on infrastructure with our staff here. And, uh, so I, I'm not, I'm not trying to prep you for something that, uh, is anything different than what we've been doing. I'm just giving you the information that we're, we're going from today and moving till tomorrow with a rate study come December, January. And I, I have no idea or anticipated idea of what those will come back to be. Part of that is because I haven't had your feedback as to what level of service you want in your capital plan. I'm not gonna just create a capital plan without your input. I'm gonna come to you and say, this is what our capital plan looks like. Does that sound reasonable? I mean, I, I would hope that you would trust me to bring you something that I can endorse and stand behind, but I'm, I'm gonna bring that to you. And again, that's not one. That's five capital plans that, that are, are simply plans to move forward over the course of the next ten years.
So, when do we have that discussion regarding what you want to know from us for the expectations?
Again, probably December, January, uh, heavy, heavy into the February with the, um, retreat budget.
Cause I prefer not to wait for the budget retreat if we can start the discussions earlier, so when-
I don't have that. If I had it, I would, I would offer that. Uh, but as soon as I have it-
And you're saying you're, you're gonna have it early, this is probably December?
Yeah, I think so. With, with the data needs that we have-
It's the data, 'cause we really can't make a decision without the data, either.
And the time limitations we all have to dedicate to this, it's not like we are just a hundred percent focused on this right now. So, I'm, I'm sending information, they're sending it back, they're sending information to Denise, hey, we need this. It looks like we looked, saw this. And, and the, the prioritization of those is important as well because whether, what you spend in year one, two, or three, or four can dictate where you need to place funds in capital for years one, two, three, and four. So, not only do we need to create the, the capital, uh, plan, we need to prioritize it. And it's not to say we're starting from complete scratch. Every year, as part of the budget, I submit to Denise, um, a plan. And some of those plans were created before I got here and some of those priorities. And so, really, um, I would say, look for the, the plans that, that we have come, yeah, December, January, and then look for heavy discussions related to those, uh, plans. And, and I would anticipate, um, spending some time discussing that as well. Cause I think there's gonna be a lot of input and discussion that we'll have.
And I don't know what level of detail you can get in on some of these rate studies, but I mean, we're putting money into having this done, I assume.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I would be interested in a component of comparison to the city- I mean, I would be interested in a component of comparison to the cities around us. I mean, it, every year, Orem puts out something based on the data that they want out there in the public sphere. I would like information so that we can clarify, or at least explain, where we are at compared to other cities that are kind of close to us.
I think our budget document does have a section on that, maybe not, I don't know, or some of our information, but...
It's in the budget document.
But yeah, I, I would caution, um...
Well, other cities do apples to apples, they, where they throw that out, it's not really apples to apples, right? When, when we compare to Orem, it's not. It's just...
No, I mean, Orem doesn't have a secondary utility, um...
But what we should do is explain why.
Yeah.
Why, why we have these charges as compared to other cities, why we're one of the highest, because it makes sense once we explain it, but we're not providing the explanation as to why. And there is a good explanation for a lot of our different utilities.
Yeah.
Um, but we just need to get that information out as to why it's higher for some, for these different reasons.
Well, uh, so, so that's a great idea. I mean, the, the, we're, we're, we're asked a ton about our utility rates.
Yeah.
And if you look at school district, if you look at TSSD, if you look at water, all of these other entities with their own boards that are, that are making up the rate, not making up, but determining the rate, um, residents are, are located at us.
Yeah.
And we have not only zero say, but less than zero say.
Yeah.
Um, we're usually just a, "Oh, this hap, this happened."
Yeah.
Right? So, somehow, we've got to inform our residents better, that if they want to get involved in, you know, school district rate increases, they've got to get involved in school district board meetings. If they want to get involved in TSSD rate increases, they need to get, there's a TSSD board. And all of these different boards that are impacting our residents and all of us, um, that we don't, we don't sit on the board, we don't, we don't get involved, we're not involved, we, we, anyway, you get it.
Well, and...
Fully.
Um, I think if there's anything that I've learned in the, since I've been sitting here, is that, um, first of all, everything has gone up. There's absolutely nothing that I'm buying now that I'm paying the same rate for, that I was 10 years ago. But, as citizens, and I love it when a citizen says, "We live in a, like, why do we need so many cops? We live in a safe town." And I show them...
Read, read the, read the weekly report.
Read the weekly report. Um, but, as citizens, we want the highest level of service, but we only want to pay $10 for it. So, it, I love the idea of having data in front of us, so that we can say, "This is a literally, this is not about a level of service. This is about making sure that we're covering the needs of this utility, so it doesn't go bankrupt."
Yeah.
And, but then also saying, "Okay, so, if there's a, an equation that goes with that level of service and with that data that says, 'Okay, so if we want to, um, what is the sewer pipe, uh, covering infrastr-" Infrastr- no.
Infrastructure.
In situ form.
Oh, in situ form.
In situ form. Like, I wish there was a version of that for culinary.
Yeah.
But, like, if we want to do, you know, certain portions of our city and do it faster, so that we have less leaks, which is financially responsible, then, you know, like, what does, there's an attachment of amount of money to that level of service.
Yeah, there is, and those, those are great, uh, comments, and, and having an educational campaign along with this is, is important.
And Neil, I, I know you guys are burdened a lot with a lot of projects going on, and Steve has, you know, a point here, that some other cities, they do, they just put the information out, and, and we see this almost on a weekly basis out on social media, right? And it's hard for us to come right back and say, "Well, it's not apples to apples," but it'd be nice if we had somewhat, some information that we could share and say...
Yeah.
"Well, here, here's where we are. This is what we, this is what we have, this is what they have. It isn't apples to apples." It, it would be nice if we could do it. I know you guys are...
Well, the problem is, is that every city changes. Like, everybody, every city is concentrating on a different utility at a certain time.
Correct. And so, that's why it's hard to answer some of these online, is because we know, but it's hard to, we have to educate our citizens on that, and so... And, you know, and the Utah Taxpayer Association has a great website out there, some information, it's, it's some good information out there that we could share, that actually lists where the cities are, top 50 cities that we follow in, so it'd be nice that we could answer back.
Yeah. Infrastructure is a long, is the long game. It, it for sure is the long game. And so, I, I happen to have a lot of knowledge of how one of those lists was created by Orem, uh, having been extremely in...
Did you create that list?
Extremely intimately involved i- in that, and so, um, I, I can, I could go into a lot of history related to why some rates are the way they are. And, uh, I, I hope we can use that as, as a tool in our tool bag, but focus on, here's, here's what Pleasant Grove needs, because similar to your home, your, your home has different needs than your neighbor's home. And your family finances and your family home, uh, and, and the way that things were financed over the last 30 or 40 years are different than some people. And so, um, I, I hope that we can look at what we need and what we want to do, uh, and, you know, I think it's been said that comparison is the thief of joy, and so, while we need to acknowledge what the other cities are, we really need to focus on what is right for Pleasant Grove City, um, because our needs are, are, are different, and our history is different, too.
And, and I think that will help with the comparison, because if we can break down why, like, our secondary water system, our, you know, whatever it is, if we can break down what we're doing, that will lend itself to the comparison without us having to go research every single city, but saying that we have secondary water, Orem doesn't, other cities have power companies, others, like, there's just, you know, obviously we don't have, so there's just different things, they have revenue from that power that, so, there's just, if we can break down ours and help our residents understand, because there's the property tax issue, but then there's the, the utility breakdown as well. And so, we do get compared, and it, it's not an apples to apples, but no one knows that, so we've got to, we've got to do, somehow communicate and inform that. So, I, I, I see what you're saying, and I agree. But, if there's a way that we don't burden you with that, and there's a way that we can, you can offload, like, give someone that information, and then we can have that person research...
We're going to make Sierra do that.
Oh, really? Okay.
I know, she doesn't know that yet, but...
Sierra would, Sierra would be awesome at that.
Yeah.
But it would be visually appealing if Sierra did it.
I mean, you, you did the graphic for the budget, like, that's awesome.
It was awesome.
If we're, if this were a marathon, we're in mile one. Uh, we're, we're, we, we have started the race, uh, but...
You just got our package.
But we, you know, we're not at the race, we're, we're wearing our number, we're jogging along, uh, and then, you know, we'll, we'll be sure that the information component is there and, and the feedback, and, and of course, if we need to have whatever level of public open house or whatever, uh, I, I will entertain anything that, that is needed to, to get to where we need to go.
Okay. Can I ask a question, though? Sorry. Are you asking, you're getting the questions now, are you asking for us, for staff, to create a document that would assist you in answering questions just based on the rates right now, not the rates that are going to go into effect next year?
Yes. Because I've, I've gotten the questions, yes.
So, that we can, I mean, I'm sure we can come up with something like that for you to, to look at right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Just explaining, really, not even to do with any, for me, this is me, not even to do with specific dollar amounts for that rate. Mine is, we have secondary water, how is ours, how and why is ours different than other cities? Because that will explain the rate...
Sure.
...associated with that utility. So, that's what I'm looking for, is just a, a general definition or explanation as to why we might have these costs as compared to other city. The dollar amount's just going to come with that based on our explanation, so I really don't, I mean, I want the new data, but right now, for me, it's explaining, we have these tanks, we, we get our water from here, we get this, so I can easily explain that to residents, because then, once you explain it, they understand, and it eases the anxiety they have about why we're higher. These are the reasons, some of this we can't control, because where we get our water and whatnot, so I just need, like, a general explanation about...
Yeah.
That would help me.
Um, I wrote you all a document related to an irrigation company that, and, and that was about four pages. Is that what you're looking for on this?
No. Four sentences.
Okay.
Per utility.
Okay.
Per, per utility.
Because we've got to explain this to the general public, and they're just not going to read more than a paragraph for each utility, that's why I feel like...
So, you're saying something to, to publish?
Something to publish that is easy to digest for someone who isn't as involved as we are, that we could easily understand why our secondary water is more.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would also, just in response to your comment, Tina, is that, as we're moving forward, which I think is something that we've talked about for almost a year, getting this rate study done, and I know, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're in the process of getting it done, is that I do want information, and I think a public open house where people can come and ask questions might, might be something in the future that we want to discuss, because I, I, I do want information about our capital plan, where we are at as far as being able to fund some of those projects now with our current rates, and where they're going to have to go, and potential solutions like bonding on large projects, and, uh, a- and, and rate increases, uh, city general funds subsidizing, all of these things I want to know, so that we can create a plan next year with all of the information that we're paying to have generated for us.
Yes.
So, I, I think it's helpful to have the information about our rates right now, just because there are document, documents out there swirling around from different cities and different sources. But for me, as I'm making my decision on our budget moving forward, I want to know that information, so that I can look at other cities, things that they've done that may have kept their rates low, how we get there, so that our rates don't increase at as high of rates. All of those things are on the table for me, as I make the decision of what our budget looks like going forward to fund our enterprises and to try and keep our rates as affordable as possible, so...
One thing I said, I think, I think early on when I came here, uh, because the, the word Orem came up, and I try not to say it as much as possible, is just drive down State Street from, uh, the border of Linden to the Provo border in Orem, and ask yourself if that's what you want Pleasant Grove to look like, so that you can have rates that look like that. And I, I don't, I don't say that lightly, but that's a reality of, of that situation. So, just serio- seriously, go drive that and say, "Is this, is this something that we're ready to, uh, to do in order to, um, keep those rates down?"
Well, I, and again, for me, it's not necessarily get our rates down to where other cities are, it's, I guess, okay, so the option is, hey, do we bulldoze a bunch of houses and put in a bunch of commercial area? That is an option, not one that I like, but there's, that, that theoretically is an option that's out there. What are the other options that are out there to help us to, to not become Orem? Because I don't live in Orem, I don't really want to be Orem, I want to be Pleasant Grove and the uniqueness that is Pleasant Grove. And, but how do we do that while trying to maintain an affordable, um, utility rate for our citizens?
Yeah.
So, very valid.
Um, one, one, uh, uh, dollar amount that we got, or one figure that we got, and I think this was like in 2014, um, it was a dollar of revenue per resident, and how much each of those cities had, and that was the equation.
Yeah.
Dollar of revenue per resident, and it was shocking at how lean we were.
Well, there's, I mean, there's, in any, you know, any business enterprise, there's fixed costs, a variable cost.
Right.
Fixed costs, you can't, you know, you got, the bigger cities have lower, lower, lower percentage costs, because they have more residents, but the fixed costs are the same.
Well, Linden was like $900 per resident, and we were $300 per resident.
I, I think I gave those numbers to you...
I bet you did.
...when I first started, because that, that, that is something that I looked into right off the bat, was...
That was so eye-opening for me.
How much general fund per resident we generate comparatively, and that's an important number to keep in mind, and, and how those numbers are created.
Yeah.
So, Denise has, uh, beeped me, I, I mean, I heard it, right?
Four times.
So, what else do you have, Neil?
I'm here all night, but, um...
I need a table.
But the...
We do have other themes I do.
I'll report on, uh, the projects are going well. I don't have any major things to report. Uh, again, some of the projects are a little ahead of schedule, some of them are a little behind schedule, for the most part. Uh, I'm pleased with, if we can get paved, uh, before the end of September on our projects, to me, that's success, because, um, you know, Fourth North, it, it's a long time coming, but guess what? It's, it's almost all the way there, and what a beautiful three streets around that whole park with sidewalk and roadway. Um, we do have some stuff going on, 1520 and, and, um, Murdoch and, and some places that we're taking care of, some long, uh, awaited fixes associated with some challenges that have been there a long time. So, um, if you have anything specific with the projects, reach out to me. Uh, the stop sign went in, and it's going well. Uh, I know Chief, um, sent some a- additional officers out there to watch the intersection and help people follow the, the rules, which was nice. Um, there is one piece of bad information, not bad, but, uh, Dion said he didn't want to break the news to you, that we are going to close Cook Family Park for routine maintenance and warranty items for a week, September 8th. So, the splash pad closes on Labor Day, that's the last day it will be open anyway, but there, there are enough items, and that's just, that's a planned closure, mind you, that we selected that day. It's early enough in the year to just still do concrete, uh, but after school started and after the splash pad closed. And with any project, there are warranty items that just need to be, and there's some concrete that needs to be replaced that's cracked, and there's some, uh, other items that just, nothing that, uh, is overly concerning, but just needs to be done.
No, it's appreciated. But I, that's, I, I appreciate us taking proactive, um, opportunity to fix those and clean those up. Um, can we talk about speed limit signs?
Sure.
Um, so we, you know, we've, we've spent, how much have we spent on roads the last year?
Last three years?
Let's take the last three years.
Last year?
Last three years.
Last three years? Hmm, 30 million?
So, we've spent 30 million in roads, um, which is incredible, which is awesome, but now those 30, $30 million in roads have taken people from 20 miles an hour to 40 miles an hour. And, uh, we're seeing it, we're seeing it all over, you know, and Neil and I actually had a conversation today, and, and a couple months ago, Neil and I sat in a, on a street corner on 1500 North and watched traffic and kind of tried to figure out how we keep people to slow down, and, and, uh, he took a proactive approach and put in a, uh, what is it called? Electronic?
A, a feedback, electronic speed feedback sign.
It's a radar, radar sign that, that clicks your speed as you go by. Um, and it's awesome. It's, it's slowed, you know, it's, it's, it's had the desired effect. My feeling is, is we ought to look at it from a city, city, um, council perspective and buy more.
And what?
Buy more. Buy more of these signs. Um, you know, I, I, nobody, nobody gets up in the morning and says, "How can I speed around Pleasant Grove Cities today?" You know, they don't, they don't do that. But what happens is, our roads are wide, they're smooth, and they're going to go fast, right?
Well, it, it's buying those, that, what you're talking about, but it's also a social media campaign and something that we can...
What is, and we, yeah, and we...
It's getting the word out.
Yeah, exactly. That's why, that's why I kind of, you know, uh, propositioned the, the social media campaign, which I think is totally, still absolutely needs to be, needs to be done.
In addition to this.
In addition to this.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, those electronic signs does, really, it's, they're really good, and they're not, they're not that expensive. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm thinking, Neil and I talked about 1300 West, um, that's a, you know, that, if you're going south on 1300 West down State Street, that's a, that can, that can catch up to you. Um, and, uh, I know, I also said, your, your neighborhood, you've been tasked with a couple of people that have, have, um, complained about speed, because we fixed the roads, right? So, I, I'd like to just add that to some discussion, some budget, some, you know, thought process as we, as we go down, because if we can buy 10, you know, 10, 10 electronic speed signs, and...
Especially right after we fix a road.
Right, right, yeah.
And like 1300 is just...
Because we've, we've, we have wide, we have... Because we've, we have wide, we have wide roads.
You mentioned the, the width and the, the rideability now has improved. And there's one thing that also Pleasant Grove has, and that is a gentle slope from east to west. And that, that can be a sub, I mean, people can subconsciously let off the gas and still pick up speed because they're coming down that hillside and not know quite how fast they're going because the engine isn't revved up or anything like that, so.
So Neil's been great. Chief, Chief Brown, he's been, he's been great as we've, you know, continued to have these conversations. But I think, I think awareness more than, you know, I mean, I, I, I had an email from a, from a resident that wanted to put a, put a speed bump on 1100 North. Said that's never going to happen. Not, not only is it never going to happen, it's a, I didn't say this, but it's not a good idea.
Yeah.
But we have to slow people down. I guess there was a, there was a motorcycle accident on 1100 North, Chief, is that right?
During 4th of July?
I think it was just the last couple of weeks.
Oh, there was one, um.
On 11? Was it, was it a motorcycle, 1100? That, that may have been it, but, but, uh, yeah, though, I think if, I think if we were to raise the awareness through the, through a social media campaign, through electronic signs all throughout our city, um, we're, we're taking a proactive approach rather than a.
Gosh, I wonder if all the cities had a couple and we could just rent them from each other.
No, we just need them all the time.
I think we see them all the time. We need them all the time. Cause, cause we can do trailers, like we, we talked about trailers. But the problem with trailers is you know, you see it there and then you see when it's not there, right? It's like, it's like a cop car, right? I mean, there's very few times that I go down 1300 West that I'm not looking underneath that tree on 1300 West, right? Not because I, I speed, but because it's.
Cause you might be.
I might be speeding, right? But if there was an electronic sign that flashed my speed, I'd, I'd slow down because I.
Let me get with Denise with, for funding and, and Chief Brown for their, their hotspots. And identify some opportunities and, and just report back or does that sound like a reasonable approach?
The, the neighborhood that we put that electronic sign in, I, I've, I've received probably 20 texts.
Awesome.
Saying, hey, this is exactly what we do.
Hey, it's a good tool. What else do you have for us?
That's, that's all I have unless there's other questions and have.
I have a quick one.
Yeah.
Really quick. And this is just, I was out on the historical commission's walking tour last night.
Okay.
And, and maybe you guys already fixed them, but on 500 North, 500 East, it looks like the corner. Just down from Joe's house, I think. Uh, it looks like it's unfinished. It's like, and it doesn't have an ADA type of access. I don't know how long it's been like that, but you had people not tripping but close, right? Trying to come to that corner.
Fifth North, 500 East?
500 North, 500 East. That, on the, it'd probably be the northwest. Or am I saying it wrong, Joe? Northeast.
Yeah, we, I mean, uh, uh, missing sidewalk is, is, is abundant in the city. And I don't know if it was taken out recently.
It's just around the, coming, coming around the corner.
I'll look at that and report back for sure.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Okay, anything else?
Awesome Neil, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to bring, because you referenced the document you sent us about the irrigation issue.
Yeah.
And to me, it sounds like, and I just wanted to verify based on what you said, is that there, there is a market for them to sell the shares if they wanted to.
Sure.
But not, but there's no benefit to Pleasant Grove Irrigation District in buying those. There's no additional water that would funnel into our PI system from those shares. That's what I understood from your.
If they sold them outside of our, uh, service area, that is correct.
Oh, so if they, so if they sold it to our service area, we, they would, they would receive those shares?
Yeah, and I, I don't know if there's much of a market outside of our service area.
Well, well, I guess my, so my question is, are, are those shares, is there value to the PG um, water district or irrigation district in purchasing those shares?
The 25%.
We, we buy them. We buy from all willing sellers today. We, every single share that comes in our office, we buy today, yes.
So I, I'm understanding your recommendation to be, look, the reality is there's not a lot of independent value in doing a deal where we have some sort of, hey, you give us 25%, we give you a discount. But if you want to sell them, we'll consider what the fair market price is and we can talk to you about that.
That is correct. Um, having something where the city, I, I don't know what the right word is sweetheart deal, I don't know, enters into some deal with a user that pays less than another user, to me, that's, this is my opinion and my recommendation would be to not do that. To let the user who has a share, sell their share and then choose to do with that money what they would like to do.
Sure.
Because anytime you, you enter into a, a, a deal with an individual user that pays less than another, that would probably be considered a subsidy in some situations.
Well, and I understand the problem for, at least from where I'm sitting is we want to help our residents. But in the end, um, the problem is this is an issue between the shareholder and the irrigation group. And that the city, we provide PI for people, but that we don't really own, we, we as a city don't own the shares. Or do we, are we a shareholder?
Yeah, we absolutely are shareholders, but we don't use any of those lateral ditches to convey, uh, surface water irrigation. We put all of our shares into the PI system. So it's, it's a more complex issue than even my four pager, but.
Yeah. And, and it probably warrants having a conversation if, because I guess what I'm thinking of, what I'm looking at is the Santaquin agreement that was sent to us. And the fact that, that that city at least felt like it was valuable enough to acquire the shares in the irrigation district. And in, in a special deal where they acquired 25% of the shares, right? And in exchange, and, and the, the other shareholder retained 75% of the share and then received a discount because I guess that city felt like it was beneficial enough for the additional water that it off, that, that there was a financial benefit to the city in receiving the additional water share. What I'm hearing from you and kind of reading as we go through some of the explanation is that Pleasant Grove City does not receive a big enough financial benefit to justify acquiring 25% of those shares on an agreement similar to the Santaquin deal.
I would agree with that summary. I, I don't think that the, the threat to a subsidy is worth acquiring those through a, a deal that provides a benefit that the city provides. Now, uh, at, at the risk of taking even more time here, there are opportunities out there with Central Utah Water Conservancy District. I just talked with them, but we are not a member city of that rebate opportunity because we didn't choose to approve those ordinances some year and a half ago. So if we did choose to adopt the ordinances, then we would be eligible to some of those conservation programs that some of these shareholders may have an opportunity to work with them directly for that, um, opportunity of a, I'll call it a grant for lack of a better word. That may include putting in some irrigation systems.
So, I mean, to me, it sounds like we probably wouldn't be able to get a deal done anyway by the time the irrigation would be turned off this year.
Oh yeah, this year is, and, and there, there's, what I didn't mention even in that document is that the physical ability has been disconnected by Linden even at the Linden Pleasant Grove border. Maybe I did, but there's no way to get surface water through the North Union Canal to those users. So physical or otherwise assigned.
So I guess, um, maybe what I would ask and just add some words to your plate, I know you've got a lot. But I would appreciate some potential solutions, whether it's, hey, we either buy them outright or we don't do anything. Or if, you know, passing some ordinances in order for them to have an avenue through a different irrigation company or irrigation district. I would appreciate some information of potential solutions that would be wise for the city to consider. You know, without creating problems for us, but might also solve some problems for those 40 or so residents.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I gave that information with that recommendation that the city buy from willing sellers and the, the, the sellers choose to do, we've already connected 95% of those affected by that.
I saw, I think you put the number at two that might not be connected.
Yeah, two out of the 40 or so.
I guess my, 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 I guess the only thing that raises in my mind is the fact that you bring up, there may be this other avenue that the city could facilitate if it makes sense for them to deal with it on their own if they didn't want to just sell their shares outright.
I'll, I'll just make mention, you chose not to engage in that ordinance amendment because there were some pretty restrictive requirements in it.
There was a reason.
Yeah, there was a reason that you chose not to do that.
Yeah, we had to look at that reason.
Yeah, I think it's always worth reevaluating.
I remember there was some hair. There was some hair on it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think we made the right decision for that time, but I, I mean, I.
So if somebody has a question about how, about their recent changes to the water coming to them, a shareholder, who is the best person to talk to? The PG Irrigation or?
Yeah, Mark Besant.
Okay.
And the PG Irrigation Company meets every month, the public meeting, Thursdays at 10 a.m.
They can come to that.
And, and the public is welcome, shareholders are encouraged. And, and that's where information can be disseminated. And, and frankly, I'm happy to talk to any shareholder.
Well, I see, I just think that they're just confused as to, um, what, what, the changes that have happened.
I, I presented this document at the PGIC, uh, meeting. And the only comment that Mark Besant had is he would like to have an about the author section and me as the author.
As we should.
Well, I, I do come from a unique perspective where I was a member of the Provo Bench Canal Irrigation Company Board for 10 years and served as the president for about half that time. So I have a pretty extensive background in this unique relationship. And I was at the forefront of the adjudication process with the State Division of Water Rights when, um, the underlying rights were being adjudicated by the state engineer. So my knowledge, I, I mean, I don't say this to boast, but I have a very thorough understanding of the situation that we find ourselves in because of that. I, I had to resign my position as president, hoping that I could leave that mess behind. But it, it found me again.
For this purpose.
Yeah.
Are you here?
Okay, anything else for Neil?
Thanks.
Hey Neil, just one thing. I'm glad you brought up your first item there because in MAG this last Thursday, did you know the mayor brought that up and caught us off guard because we, none of the other mayors had heard of this thing that the state was, uh, demanding from us there. So thank you for bringing it up to the council. So, let's see, Sherri.
Yeah, I mean, well, where, where did the last hour go? No, it wasn't that long Neil.
Yeah, I hope you've had your caffeine because I've got more to say than Neil.
Holy cow.
Just kidding, I've got about 30 seconds worth. So I, last week, watched a neighboring commu- cities, city coun- or listened to, to their city council meeting discussing funding of their library. It was a two hour meeting. And I will just say, thank you for your support. It was, it was ugly and.
What was, what was the topic, can I ask?
What was the city, can I?
No, let's not go there. Let, let's go to topic. What, like what were they, what was the argument or discussion about?
The library is funded by a levy tax and not out of the general fund.
Oh, interesting.
And has not been raised in a very, very long time. And they've gotten to the point where it's not enough.
Not sustainable.
And so the library would like to have it increased. Um, and so basically it's the question of, will you increase this? Or will we have to cut hours and, and programs and other services? Um, and it got, from my perspective, obviously I have a biased perspective, but it got pretty, well, just, just kind of ugly.
It's, you know, sad because if you, if you walk into the library on a week, weekday evening or after, late afternoon, I'm, I'm amazed at how many kids take advantage of all of the services that we provide. And, uh, that's all good things. That's all good, that's all good things that we need to be involved in.
And, and adults.
And, and adults, yeah, yeah. But you know, the, the children that, that wouldn't have the opportunity otherwise to be on a computer or read a book or, um, we, we own that as a society and it's, it's a privilege to fund it.
Thank you. There was a, a suggestion of closing it, of charging to use it. Yeah, it was, it was not good.
We need to have to come up with after ordinance, tell us what city it is.
I can do that. So thank you. I, I just came away from it feeling very appreciative of the support we get. Yes, you have. I need to bring Stacy back again. Thank you. Um, and also there was the walking tour. Eric and Sid were there. I wasn't. I had a, I had a family thing. Um, but they got about 50 people.
I'd say more.
You'd say more? It was a good sized group and those have been a really.
They actually created a traffic jam.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. David.
I will follow Sherri's lead. Just a message of gratitude from the employees for this matching contribution from the city. Over the last couple of months, I've had many conversations, lots of questions from employees. Um, and they are very excited that there's going to be this matching opportunity for them. We did an employee survey, um, two years ago. And that's where we really first saw, hey, there's a lot of interest amongst the employees and they think this, this would be helpful. Um, and I've seen the number of employees, um, increase their own, you know, retirement contributions. And there's some good financial education happening and, and those are good things to, to boost our employee wellness. So from all the employees, thank you for your support with that retirement contribution.
You know, Dave, let's, can I just mention something on that? So the purpose, the purpose of that is retention, right? I mean, we, we, uh, we totally appreciate all that our, our, our employees are doing. And they're doing an amazing job with water and sewer and public works and roads. And I mean, it's just that, that I could go on and on, but these are great employees that we don't ever want to lose to any other city. Because then that takes a, that takes a hit on, on our services. So, um, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad we, we can provide it. So, and ultimately it's because of the economic development that we're building that we can, that we can supply.
Yep, definitely. Um, then one other quick announcement, you know, that we've been doing a wellness program and a steps challenge this summer. We've had a lot of participation and we're, we're coming to an end here at the end of the month. So thanks to everyone that's done that. We, um, this is our third year doing that. And we've, um, gotten bigger than the previous two years and the number of participants and the number of steps so far. The, the real question, who's going to come out on top by, by department? The fire department and the library are in a close battle.
You, I thought you were going to nod.
No, Scott let him down. He's not entering his numbers, so.
Yeah, they've done a great job. There's a number of them. The firemen, they, they have a couple hikers and wildland guys that are out.
Well, that's not fair.
Right. No, but it's been great to see employees take interest. Just today I was walking at lunch and saw another employee, even though it's, you know, high temperatures, they got to get their steps in. So it's, it's fun to see employees, uh, trying to improve their, their wellness and physical wellness. So, um, we're going to be wrapping that up at the end of this month. Um, and then we're, we're doing a, an event. I think it's September 18th. We'll send some invite, um, information soon. We'll send some invite information soon to celebrate that. And then just one last quick note. We've had a, a great intern this summer, Kasha. She just went back to school today. She's starting her last year of her grad program. And had another opportunity come up, so we're, we're happy for her, but she's only going to be with us another few weeks. So wish her well and appreciate all she's done for us.
Thanks, David. Denise. Hey, you know, I just got to make one comment on your behalf, Denise, you know, I've, and Megan, you need to listen here. You know, I know BYU does a lot for us and whatever, whatever, but you know, I was just up here and on this thing there, it says, "The Utah Man." You know, maybe we'd have a bigger turnout if we had Utah come down and do a big thing for us or whatever.
I'll work on that.
You'll work on that, okay, so.
And go green.
Go green.
Go green.
Go green.
Get Willie down here.
I can get Willie down here.
Anyway, Wendy. Tina, do you have anything else for us? So, down here on the end here, Councilmember Rogers.
No, I said my piece during Neil's thing, you know, but I, yeah, that's it.
You've got to start up pretty good tonight, so anyway. Councilmember Jensen.
Uh, yeah, we have a, the chamber's doing the pickleball tournament Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So we are helping David with his steps and others. We do have a fantastic duo that has signed up. Megan and Diana are going to be participating together. I have a few names, but I won't say them here, but we've come up for you guys, but, yeah.
I, I'm ready.
Okay. No, but we have that going on. I think we have a bunch of other employees that are involved, so it's, it'll be a good time down at the courts. And then we had a good ribbon cutting yesterday.
How was that? I was, I was busy.
It was really, really good.
It was actually really, really good.
Diana had a donut.
It was really, really good.
It was great. You know, when you get that many women business together, just a lot of goods going to come out of that. Either that or a lot of trouble. Lot of trouble, so anyway.
Nothing, nope.
Diana.
Well, I just want to publicly thank the chamber. I, we have had a lot of economic growth and the chamber has been so supportive and just, even just the pickleball tournament and the, just the, bringing that whole business community together. I, I really appreciate that. I also have been very, very, you know, I, I don't live far away from the police station or the fire station. I actually pay attention to the sirens. I think there's nothing that terrifies me more than seeing a new officer out on patrol in the dark, pulling a vehicle over and walking up to the vehicle, not knowing what he's going to find. And I was very impacted this week by the Tremonton situation. I just am aching for families. I'm aching for a department. I'm also aching for our public safety. And I just want to do everything we can to keep them safe. And I know that's, we have a lot of calls in town and these guys are responding a lot. And I love that the citizens think that they live in a safe community, but I am very, very worried about our officers.
Okay, thank you, council. You know, we have our next meeting will be September the second. So we'll probably, there, I, I thought we were going to have a quick night tonight, but thank you for your discussion, input. And thanks, Neil, for your insight and keeping us updated. We, we know we have a lot of work still to do on keeping our general public aware of what's going on in our city and making our case for what we do. So, anyway, thank you. With that, ask for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.